I'm going to call this meeting ordered. Clerk call the roll.
Captain member Cazarelli.
Here.
Depena?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Notari?
Here.
Robel?
Here.
Schumelberg? Schumelberg?
Schumelberg.
I'm here.
Here.
Mayor Malmhahn?
Here.
At this point, we're going to ask any department head that is joining us on speaker to unmute your phone and just check in that you're here.
Judith Curran.
D. Lawrence.
I'm here.
Senator CPW, sir.
Judith Curran, CPW. Mary here.
Mary, can we get a first, last name, maybe department?
There's Cabanelas, Task Collector.
I also heard Frankie Lorenzo, I believe.
Yes, and?
Judith.
Nissia.
Chief Oliveri.
Alene Britton, help.
Chief Minikini.
I'm going to have. We're going to go through a roll call right now of department heads, just to make sure Kelly has a list, so I'm going to ask Kelly to read them off, just acknowledge if you're here.
Captain Estisito.
Here.
Frankie Lorenzo.
Here.
Judith Curran?
Here.
Billy Gilbert?
Here.
Mary Cabanelas?
Here.
John Oliveri?
Here.
Mark Menikini?
Here.
Colleen Britton?
Here.
I believe we also asked Deputy Chief Lutz. Is OEM Coordinator Lutz on the call?
I am here.
Okay, and I also see present in the room with us is Mr. Charlie Hurd, representing IT. Have we missed anybody that's on the call?
My conference call began.
Going to ask you all again to just mute your phones. Any department head that's here that was not just called in a roll call? Okay, I think we have almost everybody counted for. We're going to go forward with the rest of the meeting, I just kind of want to make a quick little announcement, obviously, these are trying times here, this is the first time that we're actually having a remote and teleworking meeting. So I'm going to ask the residents that are watching, and will be watching tomorrow when it's on the website, to just bear with us all. You'll notice that there are three council members, or mayor and two council members seated up here on the dais. We also have Councilman Depena in the front row. We're trying to just give an example of good social distancing and not to gather. Professionals that we have in the room with us pertinent to this meeting are our town attorney, the manager, and the clerk. We also have IT representing the back of the room. So we're all here, we're going to have our meeting as scheduled. We've really noticed this, that this is going to happen differently today. We ask everybody to bear with us. The public certainly has a right to not only comment on this meeting, but obviously to watch the live stream as we're all doing now. Just bear with us, in case you can't hear something correctly, I'm going to do my best to try and repeat everything that's happening on the speaker, so that you all can hear it. So without further ado, I'm going to move along with the meeting to the sunshine notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in December 19th, editions of the Star-Ledger and Bevel Tarns. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Bevel Town Hall Fulton Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office.
Next, Pledge of Allegiance. I.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one inch of the God in the municipal, liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask again, anybody that's on the speaker that's dialing in, please mute your phones. We are hearing a lot of people talking in the background. When it comes time to speaker, if you need to say anything, if you're a council member, feel free to unmute your phone and speak when you have to. But I'm going to ask everybody again to mute their phones, thank you. Next up, we have any items for executive session? No?
No items.
No items? Madam Clerk, no?
No.
No, no items for.
Alright, so you see here, item number four for executive session, there are no items for executive session. We're going to move on to item five, the approval of minutes.
A regular meeting of February 25th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve second.
We have a motion made in second to approve the minutes, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena?
Sting.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
King O'Farren.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Malmhahn?
Yes.
Next item is item number six, if you're following on the agenda, it is the report of the manager. Mayor, council, and certainly members of the public that are watching live streaming, I'd like to start off just by reading a quick email that we received today. I'd like to read this into the records, and I think it's a good way to start off my report this week. Says, Dear Chief Minikini, on behalf of the NJSA COP Accredited Program Commission and our entire organization, please accept my congratulations on achieving police agency reaccreditation through the NJSA COP Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. You and the members of your department can be very proud of this accomplishment. We look forward to working with you and the men and women of your agency over the next three years as you maintain your accredited status and work towards your agency's next reaccreditation. So I wanted to start off by just some good news that we received. And I guess a good portion of the mayor's report is going to be centered around the impact of the coronavirus, specifically on the impact on Bevel, but I just certainly would use this opportunity to acknowledge our OEM team. We meet, or I should say, we have a conference call daily. We have developed a plan, we have executed a plan, and we're seeing, we're seeing results. So I couldn't be more proud of the team that I'm working with every day. I have to thank everyone directly from Chief Minikini, Deputy Chief Gobbo, Captain Reiner, and Deputy Chief Lutz, who's heading up the OEM. So the team that we have in place and everyone on the team has been doing a great job. I'd also use this one last opportunity, every chance I get, to thank our employees who are, even though we're working on split shifts, they have clearly rose to the occasion. They are dedicated employees helping the community, and we have to acknowledge every one of those employees. And that's basically my report, because I know the mayor will be getting into some of the more detailed actions that we have put in place. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next item is item, if you're following along, I'm going to keep repeating certain things, because I can tell that there are certain people joining us along the way that weren't necessarily what is at the beginning of the meeting. And now we're moving on to item number seven, if you're following along on the agenda, which is the report of the mayor. Traditionally, my mayor's report summarizes past things, it looks to the future, what's happening in the town the next few weeks, but I'm going to really keep my report centered upon today's daily update. For those of you who do not know yet, every single day since this crisis started, the township has been updating the residents via a daily update. That daily update is posted on our town website, and that daily update is then pushed out on social media. From there, everybody has the ability to share it. So today's daily update, if you have not seen it, yesterday we reported, we had the sad news of reporting our first Corona-related death yesterday. So Bevel currently has one death reported to Corona's coronavirus. As of today, we have nineteen confirmed positive cases, with another four persons under investigation, which can be considered pending. I want residents to know something, every single positive case, every single person under investigation is then thoroughly vetted by our health department, especially the positives. Once we have a positive case, our health department conducts what is actually called a tracing, a contact tracing interview. If you've had any contact with anybody who's been tested positive, you will be notified and you will be asked to self-quarantine. That's something our health department has been doing. I also want to reiterate the manager's comments. We collectively sit on multiple conference calls every single day. I sit on no less than three conference calls a day, and I want to reiterate what the manager said, I think our OEM team is doing a fantastic job. These are, the team always convenes when we're in uncharted territory, and we're in uncharted territory. Everybody's been cobbling together and getting all the information together, communicating effectively. Every single day, we reassess, and then we evaluate, and then we make changes going forward. Again, I think everybody on that OEM team is doing a great job. Reiterate what the manager said about our township employees, they've been hunkering down with us. The manager made some very good decisions early on to close town hall to through traffic, we'll call it. Even though town hall is open, employees are here, we are still doing business here, but we have really strict controls and guidelines as to who's coming and who's leaving. This is all part of the daily update, if you've already seen it. I had a conference call today with SS County Mayors. There is going to be a drive-through center opening on Thursday. That center will be open on Thursday and Saturday. They will be able to test a hundred people a day for the first couple of days, and then up to a hundred and fifty people a day. That is by appointment only, you do not need a prescription. Once the county releases the website, that you can register, it's basically a self-registration mechanism. You go, you self-register. If the criteria, you meet the criteria for a test, you will be given a slot to get a test. That's all I know at that point, I can't say anything else on that. The next item in our update was announcing this meeting. We've done a really good job since last week promoting the fact that this municipal council meeting, probably for the first time in history, was going to be done non-traditionally. I'm very happy with our ability to keep and adhere to sunshine laws, work with our clerk, work with our town attorney to make sure that we're giving the public access and giving them the opportunity to comment, which many have already, we'll be reading them later. The next thing that we want to talk about is on Thursday, the township is organizing a conference call that will be with any food establishments that are currently open, as well as any other retail stores. It could be a pharmacy, it could be a liquor store, we want to tighten these restrictions. If you saw my video announcement yesterday, imploring people to stay home, to shelter in place, to not gather, even if it's a meeting or a group of less than ten. We've been doing that, and we just want to tighten those restrictions and tighten those controls and ask that you voluntarily follow our enhanced recommendations. That call will be eleven o'clock, if you're going to be on that call, I believe you've already been notified about that. Lastly, for right now, ShopRite is still offering seniors our extra hours. And for seniors that are still available, that still want extra hours, they can shop at ShopRite from 6:00 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. every single Tuesday. I'll just give you an update, a lot of people were asking for this. Today, we only had two seniors that requested to be driven there. The township dial ride will drive seniors that early in the morning if they request, so I wanted to get that out there, that the township dial ride will drive you. We only delivered two seniors today during that time period. There are other items in our daily report, they're considered recaps, things that we've already discussed, they are certainly on our website and on our social media. So we're going to move on, as that concludes my mayor's report for now. We're going to move on to item number eight, if you're following along on the agenda, it's called communications. I'm now going to have the clerk read the communications.
A letter received from the state of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs stating the township will receive a recreation grant to support recreational programs and initiatives in the amount of $125,000.
Next item, we have is item number nine, ordinances.
Ordinance number one, for public hearing, and ordinance to amend Chapter Six Streets and Sidewalks, I mean eleven, I'm sorry, not six.
I'll make a motion to open it for the clerk to read public comments?
No, we have to vote on the ordinance, don't we?
Public hearing.
I have no comments on the ordinance for second and final reading, I received no comments.
I'm sorry, that was my fault, I thought this was the first reading. So this is an ordinance for second and final reading?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and move for final adoption.
Second.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion, so I just want to just rewind for one split second. That was a ordinance for public hearing, second and final reading. At that time, we opened it up to comments from the public. Madam Clerk, did you have any comments for this particular order?
I did not receive any comments for this particular ordinance.
We had no comments for this ordinance, so there's a motion made to close public commenting, and then move this for final adoption, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's where we are now, I'm now going to have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Malmhahn?
Yes.
The ordinance is approved.
Ordinance has been approved. We're now going to open, I'm going to have a motion made to open for public comments.
I'll make a motion for the clerk to read our public comments.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open for public comments, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Mayor Malmhahn?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, before you read the comments, can you do me a favor, do you have a copy of the agenda there?
Yes, I do.
Can you just read the notice that we had posted about public comments?
Due to the current state of emergency and public health emergency by Governor Murphy, and in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the March 24th, 2020 Township Council meeting will be closed to the general public. This meeting will be streamed live on the township's Facebook page. The public always has an opportunity to make public comment to the mayor and municipal council during public meeting. While this new format, with this new format, if you have a comment, please submit it to the Township Clerk at kcabernal@bevelnj.org by 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. The Township Clerk will read into the record your comment during the public portion of the meeting. Please submit your name, address, and state your comment.
Thank you, so based upon that notice, Madam Clerk, have you received any comments for public comment?
Yes, I have.
Can you please read the name and address, if you have it, and then each public comment, one at a time?
I just want to check my email to make sure I did not get any more before I came over, to give him one moment. No, I did not.
So even though we had a deadline at 6:00 p.m., we have voluntarily extended it to now, which is 6:20?
Absolutely.
And nothing came in between 6:00 and 6:20?
Right.
So the public comments you're about to read all came in prior to 6:00?
Correct.
If you have a name and address, can you read that?
The first one I received is from Nick Candido, 72 Bell Street. He, my name is Nicholas Candido, and I reside at 72 Bell Street. Every year at this time, I come before to ask that the township please recognize April as Autism Awareness Month. Thursday, April 2nd is recognized around the world as World Autism Awareness Day. On this day, I ask that we light our township blue by replacing all public lights with blue bulbs. I know we are facing some tough times right now, and this may not be the priority. I certainly understand that this is something that we can do, but I just think it should be presented. One in fifty-nine children are diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, one in thirty-seven boys, and one in one hundred and fifty-one girls. Although many autism awareness events will have to be canceled, I still hold out hope that our autism awareness color run will continue, but I fear that is just wishful thinking. The mayor and council have always been very receptive to all my autism-related requests, and I want to take this time to thank you all.
Thank you, do we want to move on that? What do we normally do, do we usually?
It's on the agenda this evening.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda, yeah.
The. Right, the one thing I wanted to say to Manager Icono, you weren't here last year, we do have blue bulbs that we purchased, and we did extra work too to light them, so if we could put that in too. So we have to move on that now, we're just going to do the consent later?
Yes.
That was my question.
Yes.
Okay.
The next one I have is from Vincent Pantantoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue. He states, We are all suffering from the present health and financial crisis. I hear firsthand from many local residents who frequent my laundromat. They are out of work, desperately wondering how they will pay their mortgage, rent, taxes, and purchase food and essential items. They thank me for lowering my washer prices to $1. The Bevel Township Council can show some compassion by adopting a 2020 municipal budget with a zero tax increase. It can be done, tighten the purse strings, thank you. Next is from Eleanor Garino, 18 Chestnut Street. I hereby wish we, I hereby wish with hope for the township of Bevel's residents, the young, the old, and especially the residents whose homes are headed to foreclosure, that you remember to watch town school finances and not to even think of any tax increase. Rethink this spending. Our town is already in crisis, and many, and more big buildings will not take us out of the situation. We don't need more residents, we need more cleansing of our poor-looking township. Mayor, I've complained long before you came upon the scene about our main thoroughfare, disgraceful. Township residents, by this time of your leadership, though, we're expecting change for the good. The crisis has changed the world's way of thinking, and certainly with the condition of my home down, it must change yours too. Praying for the best, Eleanor Garino.
Do you have any more comments?
Two more. Next one is from George Panous. Being a Bevel resident, I suggest the following. One, since we do not get hand sanitizers and N95 masks, can township procure these and distribute to residents as they are not available in stores? Two, can township help in getting very necessary grocery items for senior citizens, so that they do not get out, since they do not get out and get them, only when their items are exhausted? Three, if seniors get coronavirus, concerned whether they could be admitted in hospitals, where there are facilities or ventilator, et cetera, as new to the nonavailability of beds are heard. Thanks for considering these in the meetings.
So I just want to just touch on that real quick, the township is working very hard to procure masks and gloves and items first and foremost for our first responders. We're also assisting, I know that Councilman Robel and Deputy Mayor are working also with trying to procure some supplies for Claire Moss. Obviously, we would love to give everybody masks and gloves, it's something that's on our mind, as soon as there's an abundance of it, we would like to do that almost the same exact way we prepare and handed out water filters. That would be something that we'd definitely do. Regarding the seniors, we have been instituted a dialeride early hours for homebound seniors that do not have family or neighbors that can give them a ride. Obviously, any senior, I do know, and I've been in contact with the county, the Meals on Wheels program is still working, and I've been in contact with Dr. Tomko, who has even offered to potentially help some of our seniors with giving the same exact breakfast and lunch that they're offering. So any senior that is homebound, that's having issue or trouble with groceries, I would obviously advise them to call our health department, so that we can direct you to the best help possible, which may or may not include somebody in town hall doing the work for you. Or I've been inundated with, in a good way, with volunteers looking to help seniors in the debate. So I would just advise them to contact the health department. Anybody else?
I have one more. The last one is from Michael Sheldon, 47 Lloyd Street. One, can you please give the details of consent agenda item number sixteen, resolution authorizing emergency contracts? Include the vendors involved, purpose and contract amounts. Two, in regard to consent agenda number six, resolution canceling library payment due from the township of Bevel. What is the amount being canceled, why is this being done, and will the payment be restored later this year? Three, in regard to the operation of our library, which in theory is supposed to operate autonomously from the town hall. The mayor is now listed as the president of the library. According to the state statutes, namely Article Five of the Board Officers as dictated by the 2015 Manual for Trustees, published by the New Jersey State Library Association. The officers are to be drawn from the appointed trustees and exclude both the mayor and superintendent. I cannot find a single public library board in our state wherein the mayor serves as its library board president. So please explain the legal justification for circumventing the New Jersey Library Board rules in this matter. And he has one more statement. With the distinct possibility that Governor Murphy's latest executive order will preclude Bevel residents from being able to attend and directly participate in council meetings for some period of time, with the only option then being watching the live streaming of the meetings, the effort should be made to simultaneously stream council meetings both through Facebook and YouTube. This is relatively easy to do, and there are a number of guides available online to show how to do such simultaneous streaming. In my opinion, it is unfair for the live stream to be available only through Mr. Malmhahn's Facebook page, as this requires viewers.
Not my Facebook page, by the way.
As this requires viewers to have their own Facebook account to watch the live stream, whereas YouTube live streams don't have such restrictions and can be watched in an anonymous manner. Will the council agree tonight to livestream future meetings through YouTube as well?
That it?
That's it.
And Mr. Sheldon's comment with regard to resolution number sixteen, Mr. Manager, is that your realm expertise, or is there anybody else on the phone?
Yeah, so that was done by our QPA, our purchasing agent, she requested that, and there are no contracts that were signed. All that does is carry out the governor's state of emergency, which allows the township to procure items without going into, without the bidding process and so on, in the emergency situation. It is a general ordinance that just. Resolution, sorry, general resolution that memorializes that, so that, and that was really just at the request of our QPA.
So as I often say, a lot of times titles are a little misleading, we are not authorizing any emergency contracts.
No, not at all, and I know of none, and I think Anthony can say the same, know of none that's going, that would require any bid at this point in time.
So we're not authorizing anything right now, we have nothing pending, and this is in accordance with the governor's state of emergency declaration, restricting to purchasing guidelines for municipalities in case of emergency.
Exactly.
Nothing is being purchased, acquired, bought, entered into at this point in time. That's item number sixteen, I believe there was a question about item number six. Item number six is a resolution canceling library payment due from the township of Bevel. I too, as the newly found president of the Library Board of Trustees, I also had a very good interest in this one with regard to the library. I wanted to make sure that something wasn't negatively impacting the library because of this, and as I just stated, sometimes titles in resolutions are a little misleading. So I was concerned about this also, so much so that I sent our newly minted CFO an email on Saturday. She couldn't get her email because of email issues that we have ongoing, but we did communicate on Sunday, and she communicated with me on Sunday, gave me an update. I asked her to give me that update in writing, I do have an email from her as of today, or yesterday maybe, explaining that, but I do know she's on the conference call. She could probably do a better job explaining it than I can, and I'll try and summarize it, but Judith, if you're still here, can you speak to the same exact question I had about resolution number six? Judith, just trying to check in, are you still here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. I am the chairman of the ballot from 2018, it seems as though her library was supposed to be sold back to certain items like hospitalization insurance, et cetera, and that wasn't taken place. So they actually owed us $264,000. There was a mutual agreement signed by the township and the library for $245,000. Way it can work is that we actually took it as revenue for $245,000. In order to recognize that, you have to cancel the remaining amount. So it's no longer due to, but it's the library that's owing it anymore, and we don't owe that. So it's a cancellation on both sides.
Right, now I was intimately involved in this, as both the mayor and at that time just the trustee and the library board. I know our town attorney was involved, so just to put it in layman's terms for people watching for the first time, throughout the last couple of years, the township had contended that the library owed us approximately $264,000.
Yes.
In the recent months, both the township and the library, prior to me being president of the library, might I add, an agreement was signed with the current interim library director and the township to basically agree to settle this thing, whereby the township had some money of the libraries, and they mutually agreed to settle it.
Yes.
And wipe it all out. The difference was still about $19,000 that the township still had on its books.
Yes.
And in order to get that off the books, we have to do this today.
You have to cancel it, right. So that's what it means is they don't owe us anything, and we don't owe them anything.
Right. I think that's good enough for me. And was the attorney that's sitting next to me wants to?
Yeah, it was a settlement made between, I representing the township and the library had its attorney. And obviously, through the director and through this mayor and council, there was an agreement so that basically through, to the end of 2018, the township doesn't owe anything to the library, library doesn't owe anything to the township. And then, beginning in 2019, exactly what the township bills, the library receives every thing it's supposed to receive, and the township bills them for the things that it's supposed to, the library's supposed to reimburse the township. So right now, everything's in order.
And everything's working properly now?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you both for your input on that.
Thanks.
Got my notes here. It looked like item number three was a question more for the library board and the library board attorney, I believe. But I believe in that telegraph law, I believe in that comment for number three. The sender of the comment references some kind of a state statute. Is there a state statute number itemized?
No.
I can't speak to it without seeing a state statute.
No.
If there's ever a state statute that's shown to anybody, it may in fact warrant an answer.
He did include Article 5, but it's two lines to want you to...
Oh, Article 5 is not state statute, or is that come from state law? That's just guideline by...
It just says Article 5, it doesn't say what's that.
The 98-page document that I read.
Correct.
That's a set of educational guidelines. It's not state statute.
It is not.
Okay, and with regard to item number four about participating in meetings simultaneously, listen, we're live streaming the meeting. We're live streaming the meeting on Facebook. Facebook is free to everybody that's got internet. These are trying times. Traditionally, I livestream on my political, call it, Facebook page, because that was a campaign promise. I promised that every single meeting that I sat in, we would livestream. Because the township does not have the capabilities to livestream. And by the way, the township still does not have the capabilities to livestream. I use my own software, my own hardware, my own equipment to livestream meetings as an extra layer of transparency on my mayor's Facebook page. Because today was a special circumstance, and this is literally a part of the formal meeting, we decided to show it on the township Facebook instead, since it is part of the formal process. The ability to livestream does exist with other hardware, with other technology. If the township is interested in purchasing it, I certainly would not stand in the way of that. Are there any other comments, Madam Clerk?
No, there is not.
Okay, so we have no other comments. We're at this point, we're moving toward...
We should close the public comments.
Very good. Deputy Mayor, I need a motion to close public commenting. Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have various seconds. Motion made in second to close the public comments. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
At this point, I'm going to give every council member an extra minute or so to review the agenda. We have an updated one that came to us. I think we already discussed most things that were in there. I did see in the original one here, it is, a liquor license.
We're going to pull 15 too?
Sure, we can pull 15.
Liquor license is 13.
I got it. So we're going to pull item number 13, Madam Clerk. We're also going to pull item number 15. Any other council member have anything to pull? Seeing none. We're going to move forward on a motion for the consent agenda to approve all resolutions with the exception of 13 and 15. We have a motion, but we have a second? We do have a second. We have a motion made in second for the consent agenda. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
And I just ask for an individual roll call on item number 13, please.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Wait, do we need a motion?
Oh, yes.
Motion.
I see and hear motions to make in second. I'm going to have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Upstate. Next up, we have resolution number 15. Obviously, we can vote on it individually. Does anybody want to make a comment?
Yeah, that was just the one that Nick had mentioned in his email comment to us about lighting up blue, which we've done in the past and will continue to do. And like Nick, I'm hopeful that we will continue the tradition of... Yeah, canyon. The tradition of the color on. So it's not canceled, it's postponed, right, Councilman?
That's right.
All right, so I'll make a motion to...
Is that formally, I mean, obviously, it was to go without mentioning, but we, it's absolutely been?
Postponed, yes.
Postponed, yeah, 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 yeah. So we'll come up with a date when, you know, we have...
But we can still let the town all move or...
Yes, absolutely.
Is everybody good with that? Anybody else want to comment, or should we just call the roll?
That's good. Give me a second.
Yep, I hear multiple seconds, so we're good to go for a roll call on that.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Includes the resolutions. Next item is number 12, new business. Before we go to the phones, anybody in the room here, manager, attorney, clerk, new business? No? Any councilmen?
I have new business.
Okay, I'm getting there. One second, Councilwoman. Anybody else here in the room?
I just wanted to echo what our township manager was saying in regards to the work that has been done, just receiving the information directly from the township on our website, where you can go to one place and understand what's actually happening. It's vital to all the residents, and I just wanted to thank everyone that has been a part of this process, but also encourage our rest...
It was good too, it was good.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And here it is. So we are re-zoomed, the head councilwoman.
Okay.
So you just in regards to, when you see something on social media and you spread it, whether it is a picture or a fact that you have not confirmed, it creates unnecessary chaos. It creates, it also ties up the lines of communication of the people that are making decisions that need to have availability. And my suggestion to everyone is, when you have a question, know that we are not keeping any information away from you. You know, we are trying to be as transparent as possible and making the best decisions with the information that we have at the moment. So I just want to encourage everyone to continue to look at the website for information. If you have any questions, there is emails, right? They can email directly to our health department. Seek help when you need it, but please be a part of the solution by staying home, by, you know, only going out if you genuinely need it, and not spreading information that you have not confirmed. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So to echo her, the Councilwoman's comments, we do have a specific email address set up. It's coronavirus@belvelnj.org. A lot of people come to me on social media, a lot of people email me. I need to redirect you all there for anything related to coronavirus. And we've been also tamping down some of the rumors that are going around social media, literally saying that Belville police have been investigating certain scams. All of that is not true. But that's that. I did hear that Councilwoman Burke had an item too.
That's right. In these uncertain times for all of us, I've been hearing from many of our marginalists that the fear of not being able to meet their fundamental responsibility to pay their second quarter property tax about time. As the worst of these realities thrust upon us, may I suggest inquiring to see if we can wait late fees at this time? I think that anything that would be done good to help these people with bail will would be appreciated. I would share this with the town manager, the mayor, and this entire council. Thank you. I'll reach for one more, first one, Councilwoman.
I believe, thank you, Madam Councilwoman. I have Mr. Iacono's hand up in the air.
Councilwoman Burke, certainly thank you for your concern on that issue. We already have been in contact with Division of Local Government Services, asking some questions because we have, for instance, they have strongly recommended that we suspend our water sale coming up and things of that nature. I believe we will receive a directive from the state of New Jersey, specifically dealing with the tax period, interest, and late fees that go along with that. And we would definitely follow the state guidelines that they will be providing us. But I'm certain that there are going to be adjustments made this year. I don't know for sure, but one of the things we actually even heard is that they may suspend the pension payment, the annual pension payment. So just that alone would make it over a $7 million adjustment. So I think more directives from the Department could be a fair comment.
Very good. We're all talking. Thank you very much.
We are. Just, Councilwoman, is that just for the late fees, or is that for payments altogether?
No, for the late fees right now.
Okay, because, yeah, I just want to let... Right, but just so we all know collectively, late fees are one thing, but if they don't pay their taxes, and if everybody doesn't pay the taxes, we are not paying firemen, we're not paying police officers, we're not paying our first responders if everybody collectively...
Well, I guess you know more than I do. I read my statement, and that's how I leave it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
What's...
That's how I will leave it. Thank you.
You're right. She read her statement. She's got nothing else to say. Anything else?
No.
No.
Councilwoman, I'd like to say something real quick.
What about?
What about? Yeah, sure, Councilwoman.
All right, I mean, I just wanted to echo your services that you're online about, you know, we should be praying, we should be praying for our town, our first responders, our healthcare professionals, as well as the rest of the country. I mean, I've always been a great pastor and a prayerer, so I'll just keep it up. I'm good.
Mayor Melham, if I may say something?
Sure.
Okay, I just want to, and I want to thank our O&amp;M team, our managers, you, Mayor, who do a very good job, Martin McKinney, Jeff Reiner, Deputy Chief Lutz, Deputy Chief Corbo, Audrey, all of you have been working very, very hard and we've been careful with a lot of the restrictions that we have done as council, as a council. We have been having conference calls with the managers and our staff. So we're all really in this together. And again, I want to thank everyone, and some of our council members have been through this with 9/11, with 9/11 and also with Sandy, especially Heather Jean Sandy. So we have the experience, the experience that we have. But I want to thank all of you, and especially, my thanks to you, Mayor, that you really have been leading us and leading us through this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to just reiterate what Councilwoman Nattari said for the town, but especially, not only you, Mayor, but to our town manager. I mean, having a full-time manager in place just is phenomenal. I mean, Anthony, I can't thank you from the bottom of my heart. You're here day and night, you're working your everything off. I mean, not only your regular job, but everything after that. You know, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hearing anything else from any other councilman before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Anything? Nope, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.